Well, I'm gonna call the meeting to order and let's stand for the flag salute.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
All right, can we please have the roll called on? Here.
Get the mic turned on. Commissioner Guile.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
I note that Commissioner Shadwick is absent today.
All right, we're gonna have a public forum, citizens may speak on county government usually limited to three minutes. Do we have any one interested?
Norman Manos, line of Kansas. Upstairs, the issue was raised about septic tanks. It's a KDHE issue, contaminated water. You don't know that that water coming out of that septic tank is contaminated. Where do you get your drinking water? How do you know it's clean? That's what it's about.
It's regulated by the Kansas Department of Health and they're supposed to be a certain feet from the wells and there's a lot of rules. It's not just, it's not a county, it's a state, state issue, yes.
Yeah, because water travels a long way.
But counties can turn around and add things that they want on top of that and our county's different than Ottawa County, it's different than Lincoln County. And should it be that much different? And that's why we're looking into these issues to see if we're going a little farther than what we should. Thank you, Norman. Are there any other responses?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ray Hruska, two thirty-five North Santa Fe. I want to thank the commission for including announcements on the public agenda. It has never been there before. I would like to find out if there's some guidelines regarding that. I happen to look up announcements and it says it's a public and typically formal statement about a fact, occurrence, or an intention. And then under announcements, I would still like to know, is the commission going to allow to address the public about anything the public would like to say under announcements? Because it is an agenda item and I think according to Robert's rules, there are some guidelines there that we need to be followed. Those are a couple of questions that I'd like to have answered, so we have guidelines before we, you know, since this is a new occurrence, you know, for the agenda, you know, the item of announcements.
For clarification, during announcements, you want to know if that's when the public can ask questions of something that was discussed in the meeting? I didn't understand that.
No, no, no. What I'm asking for is, well, if there's announcements that are made, does the public have the option to make announcements themselves?
Oh, if there's public participation during announcements?
Yes, yes.
Or if it's just announcements from the commissioners?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we're gonna have to talk about that. We won't do it today and I think you're gonna be gone for four weeks, so maybe it's not an issue we have to do today. So we'll get together and visit with that, Ray.
Like you said, there probably is some guidance regarding Robert's rules, so we will definitely have to check into that.
Well, it's just something new, so, you know, if you're willing to do that, that's fine, that'd be okay. Thank you.
All right, are there any other, anyone else that would like to say something? Well, if there's not, Don, you want to announce item number one?
Yeah, item one's approval of the agenda for today for the public forum as presented.
Mr. Vice Chair, I would like to add an item to our agenda, item number six, drainage and erosion discussion with possible action. Item number six regarding State Street and Lightville Roads, and then announcements will be moved to item number seven.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Held by four to zero. All right, Don, item two.
Well, did you want to go ahead and prove the agenda is amended then?
We just did.
That was your motion?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't catch it, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay.
And who seconded it?
Yes. Yeah, all right, gotcha, all right. Approval of county commission minutes for March twenty-second, twenty sixteen.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, is it all right if I go ahead? Mr. Chairman, I made that we accept the county commission minutes of March twenty-second, two thousand sixteen as presented.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second, but there is a comment I'd make on item number eleven. Perhaps it's only technical, but it talks about the very issue we're amending our agenda on. The meeting, executive meeting with Bruce Wyatt concerning a drainage issue, actually it's an erosion issue that his concern was not. Drainage and erosion are somewhat related, I suppose, but.
So you think it's just erosion?
What the real concern was there.
Okay.
The drain is causing erosion, so.
It might, it might go hand in hand.
All right.
You did approve it then?
I second.
Second it?
Need a second. We're gonna add the erosion instead of just, it is drainage, but it's causing erosion.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? This carries four zero. All right.
Commissioners, I'll just add that to the, once you sign the, that document there, I'll just add that to that. I'll put drainage and erosion.
Right, that's what I did.
To correct that. Item three is bid award for two chassis and cab units for RFD Rural Fire District number seven. Let's see, that's request for action, my eyes aren't falling, let's see. There is a request for action on that, it's just not.
One thirty-one dash sixteen.
Yeah, thank you. That's RFA one thirty-one dash sixteen.
All right, we got Shane representing us?
Yeah, I'm Shane Comark, the chief of Fire District Seven. I'm here today to request permission to go ahead and purchase two cabin chassis models that were bid. The winning bid was, the lowest bid was Marshall Motors at forty-four thousand nine ninety-one. The other bid came in from Long MacArthur at forty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. And we are asking to go ahead and purchase these two cabin chassis units at the bid from Marshall Motors at forty-four thousand nine ninety-one. They met all the specs.
Mr. Comark, I meant to ask you upstairs, I thought it was just a typo or a slip-up, but you keep saying nine ninety-one and all our paperwork says nine fifty-one.
Mine says nine ninety-one.
Yeah, our documents are in our minutes and then here all say nine fifty-one. And I noticed you said that upstairs, but I let it go because I thought it was just a verbal typo.
Yeah, the RFA here I have says nine fifty-one.
Oh, well, it is forty-four, nine ninety-one.
So it is nine ninety-one?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioners, that is RFA one thirty-two dash sixteen on that one.
One thirty-two dash sixteen.
Yes, sir.
Oh, it is one thirty-two.
Yeah, one thirty-two is this RFA here.
It said one thirty-one on our packet.
One thirty-one's the tire machine.
Oh, okay, so I had to.
Yeah, one thirty-one's the tire changer for Road and Bridge.
Okay.
And we've bought the, got the unit for the, the, the.
Yeah, we purchased the beds for the truck back in December.
And so the bed's here and ready to go on, is it, or is it?
No, it, it still has to be built. The production date's not till July.
But we have the okay to build it to the specifications.
Yes.
Instead of the new specifications, it would be more costly.
Correct.
And so we've kind of known about this for several months, this chassis. Is there any questions from the, any questions from the commissioners? Questions from the public concerning this truck? We had two bids, Marshall's and Ford. Marshall's is the low bid.
If not, Mr. Vice Chair, I move that we award the bid for the two chassis, RFA one thirty-two dash sixteen to Marshall Motors in the amount of forty-four thousand nine ninety-one. We aren't gonna do the, no, is that correct? We were gonna go ahead and approve the low bid of the four-four nine ninety-one.
Per unit.
From Marshall Motors. Yeah.
Per unit. I'll second that.
Oh, yeah, per unit.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item four.
Okay, this is one thirty-one dash sixteen.
Okay, there we go.
Purchase of a new tire changing machine for Road and Bridge. Have Gary Nash here, Road and Bridge Director, to give you a report on that.
Yep, doing an RFA to purchase a new Tiger T seven seventy-T tire machine from Central Equipment of Wichita for a unit price of forty-six fifty to replace our current tire machine, which is a two thousand one Hoffmann Monty thirty-eight hundred that is currently broken at this time, and then parts to replace it are not locally in the U.S. and have to be purchased out of France with no return on them, so.
Okay. And that, that machine, it, it's a take, it's a big machine, you put the tires, it grabs the tire and it rotates it and they put a disc against it and it rolls the tire off and they swing it around and roll the other, it's quite a labor-saving device for our employee out there, he's, he's not a.
Yes, it is. And like I said, the current machine we've had since two thousand one, so we've had it for fifteen years. It's serviced over, probably over five thousand tires.
And then we're gonna put the old machine on Purple Wave and we may get a good price out of it where the total price won't be forty-six, so.
Okay.
It's done real well and any other questions by the commissioners? What about the, any, any questions from the public concerning that, this machine? We're just moving right along here, aren't we? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I made that we purchase a new tire, T seven seven OT tire machine from Central Equipment of Wichita in the amount of forty-six thousand five fifty dollars, forty-six hundred and fifty dollars with no trade-in.
I need to hear a second.
I'll second.
Eight seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries four zero. All right, we had.
Commissioners, did you want me to put a note, note in the minutes about selling that on the, the use on Purple Wave then?
Yes, I would.
I'll just, you, you, is that good enough?
Yeah, we need to, we need to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put that as a note in the minutes.
No trade-in, but we're gonna sell it.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, and we're gonna discuss something here a little bit, so stick around with us if you would please, and we're ready for the next item.
Item five, it's request for action one thirty-four dash sixteen. It's a Verizon cellphone contract for the Health Department and I got Jason Tiller here as Health Department Director.
All right, Jason.
Morning. What we have here is a request for action for the Health Department to end our Next Tech contract early and start service with Verizon so that we have consistent reliable service and cutting our monthly service fees in half. And everything is covered by our current budget. I did talk to Alan Moore. It is a twelve-month contract and no early termination fees in that contract if we decided six months in that Verizon wasn't working.
So it's a, it's a twelve-month contract, but we can obviously go longer than the twelve months.
Right, correct.
And the price stays to nineteen on the, on that.
Or does the price only stay twelve months?
No.
No, unless we make changes to our service, then we will stay on that price.
For how long now?
Till nineteen.
Will it go to nineteen?
That promotion ends in twenty nineteen.
Yeah, that's what he was able to go with right now. Of course, three years out, you know, after this is over, that might change, of course.
Right, right.
We're tied in for three years, is what we're saying, though.
Until nineteen anyway. Okay.
All right. Is there any, anybody, any questions in the, any questions from the audience, public, out the Verizon? And you say it's gonna save us about half the money, that sounds, that sounds great, doesn't it? That's what. Want to have a motion for the RFA one thirty-four dash sixteen?
Mr. Vice Chair, I move we cancel the contract with Next Tech and sign a contract, RFA one thirty-four dash sixteen with Verizon Cellphone, and then turn to a new contract with them as staff provided.
I'll second that.
Jim seconds it? Do I hear a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero. Okay, now we're gonna go to item six.
Six will be the erosion control discussion for the, in the area of State, West State Street Road and Lightville Roads as requested by landowner, Mr. Bruce Wyatt.
All right, well, I guess our discussion on that is that Mr. Wyatt, they had a, you know, have a very good presentation of it, but there was a water, the tube was moved to a bridge and the water's coming across the road and it's causing erosion and we've put some heavy rock in there, but we need about twenty more feet of rock. And he has a contract that we're to take care of his erosion. And so I, I think what we want to do is, is have, when you guys, I don't know if you have any large rock right now?
Yeah, we got some riff raff we can put on there.
Uh, we just put in that twenty feet maybe before we get some April showers, bring May flowers and, and just stop that erosion and if it goes five feet down the road later, we'll take care of that, but we're not gonna just do the whole thing and, and build a wall there, we're just gonna.
So are we making this into an RFA? Does Gary need to bring this back as an RFA or are we making?
I think we're gonna try to, are we gonna set it up today and, and try to do it?
Do we need an RFA for that, or can we just verbally?
Not necessarily if you.
You can go ahead and just.
Approve it?
And give, and give Gary the authority to, to.
To haul riff raff.
Haul the riff raff.
So twenty feet?
Yeah, where it's actually makes that turn and goes there, because then it's downhill, it's actually part of that Marlberry Creek after it gets over that hump there.
And just.
To detour it and make it turn.
But we don't want small, we want something that'll stay in its place, you know, and, and.
It's only about, it's only about a two-foot wall that's showing erosion for about twenty feet.
I think it's a little taller than that.
Yeah, it's about four foot or so.
It's about four foot or better.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Won't, won't take a lot of work, though, in order to do that, so. Does anyone even want, would like, do we have, do we need to make a motion on that or just give him authority to do that?
Whatever you, whatever you all want to do, I can put it in the minutes.
Well, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and give the director, Gary Nash, the okay to put in rock to, riff raff, to avoid that erosion at West State Street and Lightville Roads.
I second that.
And I want to get a comment from the public, please.
Norman Manos, line of Kansas, being this involves a natural waterway, Walnut Creek, I would suggest you check with the Department of Water Resources boards because you may be creating a problem going into Walnut Creek and that involves the Department of Water Resources.
I think the problem is already created.
The water's already going.
Yeah, but if you re-rock it, now you may move the problem further downstream into Walnut Creek.
Well, actually, actually what we're doing is keeping the erosion to go in another place and keep it going where it always used to go.
Yeah.
That's where it always went.
So we're not really changing.
You're diverting the water and you can't do that.
No, we're not diverting the water, it's, it's going that way. What it's, what it's doing now is washing out where it's coming out.
Okay, just check with the Department of Water Resources.
We'll let you handle that, Gary. Look into that, please. Thank you, Norman, appreciate that. Any other comments from the public? Can I hear a motion?
There's a motion and a second.
Sorry, motion, okay.
I'll second that.
And I guess we'll hear a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Item number seven now is announcements. Anybody got anything public going on?
Nothing I'm aware of, except that you might want to mention that we are going to reconvene back upstairs at a little thirty.
We'll look into that, how we're gonna, Dan, Dave, you had a, you gonna do it?
I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like to read a statement. "Some have suggested there's no connection between quotes from our founding fathers, which are read at commission meetings, and county government. I suggest there is, especially the quotes that relate to the Bible. The deterioration of the moral fabric of our community has direct impact on much of county government, including jail population and health services. Trends in both of these departments are clearly adverse in terms of cost to taxpayers and damage to human lives. Recidivism rates and jail population are escalating. Medical and family care expenses resulting from deteriorating moral standards are on the increase. So how are these conditions best addressed? John Adams once said, quote, "Our constitution was made only for a moral and religious people. It is wholly inadequate for the government of any other." How can the moral deterioration in our culture be most effectively addressed? By a change on the inside, a change of a person's heart, using biblical terminology. That is done by God alone and He uses His word, the Bible, to produce it. The message of the Bible is what one must believe to receive a new heart, to become a new creation. The decline in the moral fabric of our nation is most notably correlated with the removal of the Bible from public education. Our founding fathers and governing officials for the first one hundred and fifty years of our nation would be appalled at our rejection of the one book that had the most significant positive influence on this great country. We presently are suffering the consequences in many ways. This is what I want to see reversed. That's why I try to remind our citizens of the need to change our ways and return to that which made this country the most blessed nation in the world. So help us, God."
All right, another announcement, eleven thirty, we have a mandated publication discussion with John Lewis, President Lewis Publications. And that'll be upstairs at eleven thirty. So, is there any, any other announcements? Don, you have anything?
No, sir, thanks.
All right, we have a motion adjourned.
Somebody.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carry four zero, we're adjourned.